Good evening. I would like to call the March 11th, 2021 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Aaron Holland will have the invitation. Please rise.
Dear Lord, we come before you today and we pray that you continue to keep our staff and students safe as we navigate these waters. Be with them in their educational endeavors. Also be with our students as they continue their extracurriculars. Be with them. Let them be successful in all they do. Be with our staff and teachers as they work day to day to help our students be successful. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing while Mr. Tucker Green leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do, Madam Chair. I would respectfully request that the Board amend the agenda to add Action Item H and label that action item "American Red Cross Full Service Training Agreement."
All right. Are there any other amendments that should be added at this time?
Madam Chair, I would like to amend the agenda to consider removing the interim designation from the title of the current superintendent.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion to amend? He's made motion. Okay. We didn't do a second for the Red Cross though. May I have a second to the motion to amend the agenda?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Holland? Okay. To include the approval of the full training agreement and removing the interim designation. Mr. Holland made the motion. Okay, do I hear a second? I'll second. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Five.
Okay. The vote is 5-0. None opposed. Those items will be amended and put on the agenda. We have two requests for public participation tonight. Mr. Christopher Pence and Mr. Brian Rittenberry. I will read the Board policy on public participation. Afterward, each of you will have five minutes to speak. We will have a timer on the display to assist you. This is Board Policy, B.C., B.I., Public Participation in Board Meetings. Meetings of the Board of Education are structured to allow the Board to conduct its public business. Meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not to be confused with public forums. When time permits, the Board of Education, as a matter of general operating procedure, offers an opportunity for legal residents of Pickens County to address the Board in open session. The following rules shall be adhered to. Number one, to be placed on the agenda, a citizen must request to appear before the Board in writing at least five days prior to the monthly regular meeting of the Board. The request must state clearly the topic or issue to be addressed. Number two, each citizen whose name is placed on the agenda will be given five minutes to make their comments, but the total time allotted to citizen participation will be limited to 20 minutes. Citizens may reduce additional concerns to writing and submit to the Board of Education if five minutes does not provide sufficient time. Number three, where several citizens wish to address the same topic or issue, the Board reserves the right to further limit discussions should they become repetitive. Number four, while citizens may use their allotted time to take serious issue with Board decisions, the Board will not permit anyone to become personally abusive of individual Board members or Board employees. Number five, when issues arise that stimulate high community interest, the Board may schedule special meetings specifically to invite public comment. In those circumstances, the Board will establish special guidelines for participation. Number six, the Board will not respond to comments or questions posed by citizens in their presentations but will take those comments and questions under advisement. Mr. Christopher Pence, may I speak?
Thank you for the opportunity. So over the years, this Board has made the public believe that additional funding is necessary in order to provide a good education for our students. This has been proven recently by the request for additional E-SPOS monies, and yes, the Board was able to roll back the mileage rate, but that's only because our home values have continued to increase, which is raising what we're actually paying. This same increase has made the rate of the Board's desire to waste money, excuse me, I mean spend money. Based on your recent vote, you have demonstrated that there's plenty of money in the school system to provide tax relief to the property owners and especially our seniors. It has become apparent that additional funds were not necessary. The Board continues to spend and waste money on contract buyouts or emergency building projects like the Dover Building that just had to be built in a short amount of time. Therefore, it is becoming obvious that the system has the money that it needs but chooses not to spend it right wisely. Bureaucratic waste and administrative inefficiencies abound here. The Board has proven this by the quick elimination of positions to make the payout of the superintendent's contract budget neutral. The press release states that during his interview, Mr. Young presented a plan to reorganize and lower spending. It then states that he has begun to implement his plan by eliminating the Assistant Superintendent position as well as one other position. So are you trying to tell me that over a year ago that his position was not needed? Or now are you telling me that the Board knew that these positions were not needed but continued to approve a budget that included them? That same press release states that the latest buyout will be budget neutral because the remote learning through Pearson will be eliminated. While I understand that this was a quick stopgap for a crazy year and maybe Pearson isn't the best option, you are utilizing these savings to stop the bleeding from your decision. Therefore, I am to assume that no additional funds will be spent on online learning. So are you telling me that the decision has been made not to offer an online option next year? Or is the online learning going to be put on the backs of our teachers through its learning? As a citizen, it appears that the Board continues to approve spending more and more on administration and waste instead of reallocating that money back to the classroom. I'm not saying that administration is not needed, but the administrative positions seem extremely heavy for a school system this size. The Board has shown through the last several years that the good of the student and the will of the parents and the taxpayers does not matter. It's as if the Board feels that monies that are spent are not even real. You just approve whatever until you decide that $400,000 can be spent without cause. Then you expect the CFO just needs to figure out a way to make it work. Ms. Finley, I agree. There is definitely a leadership and stability issue, but it is the Board, not the superintendent, that is the issue. It is costing us time and money, time by consistently changing the direction and vision of the system, money by paying out contracts over and over. So what should happen from here? The Board should commit to fiscal oversight that benefits the students, the faculty and staff, and the taxpayers. The school board should commit to a vision of high expectation for student achievement and quality instruction and define clear goals towards that vision. The Board should have strong shared beliefs and values about what is possible for students and their ability to learn while ensuring that the system has the ability to teach all children at the highest level. The Board should be accountability-driven, spending less time on operational issues and more time focused on policies that can improve our student achievement. The Board should have a collaborative relationship with the staff and the community to establish a strong communication structure to inform and engage both internal and external stakeholders. The Board should get over personal vendettas. The Board should lead as a united team with the superintendent, each from their respective roles, with strong collaboration and mutual trust.
Thank you, Mr. Pence. Ms. Rittenberry?
Members of the Board, my name is Brian Rittenberry. I'm here today to speak regarding excess spending and a specific nonessential position. Since three of you spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and with the irreverence that you've shown towards the taxpayers, several of us wanted to remind you of a position that we could cut down to further save us money. Currently, our system employs an attorney. Why? In the search of open Georgia, Pickens, out of eight counties in the North Georgia area, is the only district with legal counsel on staff. I question why we would continue to employ this individual to oversee every move we make when what we should be doing is we should be acting within our authority and handling our day-to-day business appropriately with respect to the stakeholders of this county. Also, legal counsel is usually on an as-needed basis and is typically retained and paid as a vendor. I can promise you that 100% of the people in this county that I've discussed this with were aware that we pay a salary for this position, but what they were not aware of is that he's paid as a 50% employee and is on our payroll and that we get to provide him with health insurance, pay him to his retirement, provide him sick days, vacation time, and you can trust me when I say they are not happy. Actually, I learned that we pay 30% over this salary for benefits. So in 2020, what should have been paid as a vendor for legal counsel, we paid $40,938 to our employee, but approximately $12,281.40 in benefits. Those numbers don't include travel expenses of $537 paid, but my question is why travel expenses? The offices are across the street. So according to our CFO, we spent $90,000 in 2020 on legal expenses. And while I haven't gotten it yet, I have filed a formal open records request with Ms. Martha for copies of the documentation for all those invoices submitted and paid, including the salary documentation for Mr. Landrum. The really interesting number is that if you include the benefits that are paid to our employed legal counsel, the total cost to us exceeds $103,000. Since we pay him, does he have an office in our administrative building? No. Does he use our tools and resources to perform his daily duties? No. And the better question is, since he's an employee on our payroll, do we require him to be on the job at least half the day every day? Because in my office, my employees are required to be there all day. So something tells me that if Dr. Townsend were still here, he would have soon required Mr. Landrum to be at work for at least half the day. Since we put it, it's not an employee position but rather a vendor. I'm an insurance agent and when I work with workers comp, a 1099 contractor who derives his sole income specifically from a company and also uses their tools and resources, then they're considered an employee. But what we have here is total opposite, total opposite of what we should, and we're still throwing money away. So here's a great example. Let's say for instance that if I terminated an employee from my company and that employee prepared a statement that was amicable for all parties, yet we held off on the termination for five weeks. I think that my own staff legal would prepare a statement on my behalf. I would expect him to. But we'll just pretend that he doesn't and instead plagiarizes what my ex-employee prepared and released it to our shareholders. To me, that's failure to do a very simple legal task and will be grounds for dismissal as a vendor, much less an employee of my company. Philip Landrum is another common denominator aside from the Frivolous Three that have consistently contributed to much of the agony and discord amongst the ranks in our system. And it is time that this employee be relieved of his or her duties, or his duties, as an employee slash non-employee slash who knows what actually even happens, and the Board should do what they're supposed to do, work on our behalf. I and thousands of others in this county will from now on scrutinize every single move that is made by this Board, especially by the Frivolous Three, until you're all legally removed and it's on the way. We will see that you're held accountable for the actions that you've taken against the taxpayers in this county. But for now, we'll start by calling for the resignation of our legal employee, Mr. Philip Landrum, and that will help put an end to the continuous waste and further stop excess spending and we can rid ourselves of yet another nonessential position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rittenberry. All right. Next on our agenda, Ms. Schock is going to recognize a student. I'll let her tell you about that.
Good evening, members of the Board, Mr. Young, and guests here this evening. It is always an exciting time when we can come before you and recognize the outstanding achievements of our students. Tonight, I'm honored to introduce to you I'm honored to introduce to you Georgia's Microsoft Office Specialist Champion, Ms. Megan Lexie Jarvis Cantrell. Lexie is a senior at PHS and is the daughter of Matthew and Kristen Cantrell. Lexie earned the title of Georgia's champion by placing first in the 2020 Microsoft Office Specialist State Level Competition. She has completed the requirements for the CTAE Business and Technology Pathway at PHS. Her instructor, Mrs. Ginger Brizotti, shared that Lexie is very smart and works diligently at any task given to her. Lexie also participates in the Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA Club. Future Business Leaders of America, Phi Beta Lambda, is a nonprofit education association with a quarter million students preparing for careers in business and business-related fields. The Microsoft Office competition tests student skills using the Microsoft suite of products like Word, Excel, and PowerPoint. The top students are invited to compete at the National Championship held in June. So Lexie, it will be time to pack your bags soon. There are three levels of winners, all of which receive a scholarship. The first-place national winner will compete in the Microsoft Office World Competition, and I've shown their first, second, and third place, so all three places do receive a scholarship.
What does it take to be a champion?
It takes knowledge.
It takes practice.
It takes hard work.
It takes the confidence and knowing you can overcome any problem.
Any solution.
This is my chance.
My chance to see new places, to meet new people, and to make new friends.
This is my chance to test myself against the best in the world.
And to compete for the ultimate prize.
This is my chance to prove I'm the best.
I am the best.
This is my chance.
This is my chance.
My chance to be a champion.
Our first-place winner and world champion is?
Lexie, Pickens County is proud to have you representing PHS in our school district. We wish you well as you compete with other students from across the country. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Tim Basin, CTAE Director, Mrs. Ginger Brizotti, her business and technology instructor, if you will, please come forward, and Lexie, if you will join them. We would like to present you with a certificate of achievement. So congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Great job. Our next presentation will be from Chris Williams and Brandon Thomas.
Good evening, Mr. Young. Madam Chair, members of the Board, those in attendance tonight, thank you so much for having us here tonight. Would like to say, I like to say this often, but it is a great day to be at Pickens High School Dragon, and we're very pleased to be here. This is the very best part of my job, when we get to recognize young people for their accomplishments and also their coaching staff as well. But I'm so glad to be able to present this group of young ladies. Also, Coach Thomas, gonna bring him on in just a second to have him talk about these young ladies and their accomplishments, but I can assure you, and assure the community, members of the Board, that these young ladies here in front of us represent the best of Pickens High School in what we have to offer academically, athletically, and they are ladies of high character, and that's what we want, leaving Pickens High School and going out into the community and being productive members. And I'm so proud of them and their accomplishments and also everything and the hard work that the coaches have done. But this time, we'll bring forth Coach Thomas and Coach Lutz and let them address the Board.
Thanks. Don't really have any prepared remarks, just anytime we get a chance to talk about these kids, it's exciting. So I really, first off, just wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to, putting us in a position to be able to compete in athletics, not just our sport but the fall sports and the current spring sports. It's, I know during this particular year, it's been difficult to make some of the decisions you guys have had to make in how we function, but because of your confidence in us and our administration and being able to follow rules and protocols, we were able to experience what we did this year. And I know all of our families that are here and all the families that aren't represented are very grateful for that. So that's our thank you to you guys. A couple of things I wanted to say thank you about, hopefully it'll go back to them, is just our great community support that we experienced during this process. I know that it's not every sport and every situation that gets to have some of the recognition like this that we've been able to experience the last few weeks. And it was a special time, pretty much a 20-year gap in region championships for a program that has had some success in the past. So we got to see the excitement kind of swell in the community as we were able to accomplish a region title, and then we got to see it swell even more as we were able to advance further than we might typically in the state tournament. But one of the things that's really special in that, that these girls absolutely cherish is just the support that comes their way from all the schools, each administrator. Teachers in the county, they rally to gather notes from kids. That just brings tears and laughter, not bad laughter, but just excitement as they open up goodie bags each round of the state tournament. They probably had 15, 20, 30 things from little kids in our community. And then all the way up to the very end, just getting messages, people along the road holding signs from different school systems, one of the kindergarten classes, you know, sending a message to us with the whole class on video. All that stuff is just a blessing. We just want to say thank you for our community, everybody that's involved in doing those kind of things. We wish that everybody could experience that kind of support, but I know that these girls appreciate it. Just to give you a brief idea of what they were able to accomplish is basically they, a unique thing about what they were able to do is they did it collectively. A lot of times when you have a team that does very well, there's a dominant player or two, or there's a lot of size. I know if you look at our team, we don't look super tall, and Cassidy's head slightly above everybody else's, but we're not a super big team, we're not a super fast team, just not even necessarily overly skilled, but what they were this year was definitely a team. If you got to come watch any of our games, they cheered for each other as good as any team I've ever coached. The excitement from any of the pictures you might have seen on Facebook of the kids not in the game cheering for the kids in the game was a special thing to be a part of. It's something I hope we can replicate, you know, it may not always be the exact same style, but we can at least get the same culture with the kids that are returning. So I would say that's, other than winning, that's what we've most been proud of with this group. And I'm gonna put Cassidy on the spot, but I'm gonna ask her to come up here and just say something real quick on behalf of the players. We joked about it, but now it's for real, she's gotta come up here.
We just wanted to thank the community for all of the support and love. We really appreciate it, and it really makes us feel special when we got to see just everyone come together to support us this year.
That's pretty much all we have. If anybody doesn't have anything else, we'll snap some pictures.
Just like to add one thing, commit to something about culture. I can assure you, because I've seen it firsthand, these ladies, not only here but those from ninth grade on up and maybe I would dare to say even down into the junior high, they have bought into what it means to be a Dragon Act. And the closer I am to it, the more I can see it on a daily basis. But I, again, I'll go back to, to me, the more important things. The character issues and things that these ladies teach, these other young ladies walking around the school, I'm more proud of, even though I'm proud of the record, ladies, I really am. You did great. But the legacy you're leaving behind is going far outlive anything else that you've accomplished, and I'm really, really proud of you for that. I thank you for that because working with discipline, that helps my job look a little bit too. Again, I really appreciate everything that you stand for and everything that you've done for our school. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much. Next on our list, Mr. Chris Holland. He has more good news to share.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board members. Mr. Young, appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today.
Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you this evening. We received word here a couple of weeks ago, I'll go ahead and start putting this up on the screen, that we were named an AP Honor School for 2021, which is based on the Class of 2020 Achievement and in the area of AP STEM. And so I just wanted to bring it before you guys tonight, to show you a little bit about what this designation means and what we, as a school, were able to accomplish to receive this recognition. So just got a slide here with a little bit of information. First of all, AP stands for Advanced Placement. And just put in there a little information about what it is and what it entails. And so several ways that Georgia students can earn college credit. And it depends on how well they score on that AP test, which is what the AP students all across the nation take. So it is pretty rigorous, as you can imagine, to get college credit for. But depending on the school, three, four, or five on the AP exam, will get you a college credit, which as any of you know, that have helped pay for college or are paying for college, you know that that is a huge saving. So that's a great deal and we're glad we're able to offer AP courses for our kids so that they get that opportunity and also get prepared for the rigor that they're gonna experience in college. So that's a big deal. The next thing I put is, you know, how do you get this distinction? Just wanted to show you what the state recognized, how they recognized this particular designation. And so you have to have a minimum of five students and they have to test at least four of the AP STEM courses and enlist them out there. Now, to have students that are able to do this, you have to, of course, offer the courses. So that's where I'm most proud of our school, being relatively small school in consideration with some other schools around us, especially when you go south, is to have those offerings. So we have most of these in our school. And it varies from year to year. Sometimes we don't have enough students or we don't have the students that are interested. But based on the students' requests and what they would like to see and have the opportunity to take, they usually get the opportunity to take multiple AP courses. So in that STEM area, you can see things like AP Calculus, and there's two different calculus courses. We offer both of those and AP Stats, AP Biology, so it goes through the sciences. And then our Computer Science, which is nice to have that other option too, because we've got a lot of students interested in Computer Science. So we've got a good, robust program there through the CTA Department and that helps us as well. So it's nice to have the opportunities, because it's hard to get, you know, five or more students if you don't have enough courses to be able to work it into their schedule over the course of their high school career. So I appreciate the support, you know, to be able to have and offer those courses. So then I just wanted to go through a few numbers. There are 175 high schools named as AP Honor STEM School, which is 36.4% of the total number of high schools in the state, so 481 as of now. And then I put some other facts there that I thought were interesting. Georgia ranks 17th out of the 50 states for students who pass AP exams. One thing to be able to take them, it's another to be able to pass them. And I'm proud to say, in the Southeast, Georgia really does well and pretty well is the top school or top state for anywhere around us in pass rates. So that's pretty cool. And then to show you how rigorous it is, 23.2% make threes, fours, or fives on AP exams in Georgia. And then 38.5% of students total across the state took AP exams sometime during their high school career. So I just want to give you a few numbers, kind of put it in perspective for you. There's a few ways you can make AP distinction in different areas. Some we don't qualify for, that we could never make. But I think this is a cool honor, because it goes across multiple disciplines and you reach a lot of different kids, because CTA is in there and students jump over. Not just math kids, not just science kids. You get a lot of crossover there with the STEM. And I think that's really neat that we have that to offer here for our kids. And I think it's gonna make a difference for them as they go and pursue further things, paths beyond high school. So I'm really excited that we got honored this way. And I'm proud of our students, of course, and I'm also proud of our teachers, because in order to be an AP Honor School and offer those courses, you have to have qualified staff in order to teach those courses. So you gotta have it all together to make it happen. And so the only way we can do that is to continue to have support of those teachers, make sure they're AP certified, make sure we have the right people in the right seat on the right bus, so to speak. And we're able to do that so far. Good support to have that, I appreciate what you guys do in that part of it. And we're gonna keep on trying to do that and add, of course, when we have the availability to do so. And I think we've got a lot of AP courses at our school based on our size. I'm really happy about that, because we need to offer everything we can for these kids, give them every opportunity possible. We're a one-horse town for high schools, so I love the fact that we have so many offerings. So thank you for your support, wanted to give you a chance to answer, me to answer, any questions that you might have, any comments or anything that I can answer for you, I'd be glad to with AP. Alright, well just, last thing, just thank you again for all you do to support us in this and every other activity we have to make for the best experience possible for these students as they attend our school. So thanks a lot, appreciate it.
And we have a report from Marla Callahan, who's the principal of Harmony Elementary. She has more good news.
I do. Thank you guys for having me tonight. It's really difficult to follow such an amazing act, like this girl's EL eight and the AP Honor Recognition for the high school. But I want to say this, I know that working from every grade level, from kindergarten to 12th grade in Pickens County, that a lot of small academic steps that need to take place in order us to get those started at elementary schools. So one of those steps in academic achievements is something I want to share with you guys, and that we're really proud of. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about English learners at HEB Harmony. Educators love acronyms, like you all know. So I'm gonna begin by telling you a little bit about a definition, then some about EL students, their assessments, and then their tremendous growth that they've shown. English learner, or English language learner, or ELL, you will see all of those, are students who are unable to communicate fluently or learn effectively in English. So who often come from non-English speaking homes and backgrounds. So it's very difficult for them to learn academics through English language, because that is not their main language. Annually, schools nationwide assess their understanding of reading, writing, and speaking English with what's called the ACCESS test. ACCESS stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English, State to State, for English language learners. And it's really a test given to students kindergarten through 12th grade to assess their progress in learning English and is used by the state as an accountability measure. So their EL progress toward English language proficiency is really called an ELP. So the ACCESS test determines this ELP score. Progress towards ELP measures the extent to which English learners are making progress. This is measured by EL students moving from one state-defined performance band to another performance band on this ACCESS test. So let's go back to March last year of 2020. So the US Department of Education approved Georgia's waiver for no federal testing and accountability requirements, okay? So we did that, that means that we didn't have milestones, we didn't do that. However, the ACCESS test is given from January to March. It's not given typically when the milestones are. So we had already completed the ACCESS testing when we were sent home in school closures. So I kind of gave a timeline of events, because it is a little confusing, because we all think that when we test, we immediately get those scores back and we know everything, but we don't. So it kind of takes a little while to figure out how well we've done. So basically, in August of 2019, it was a big push at our school to make it much more rigorous instruction for our EL students. In February and March, like I said, in 2020, last 2020, we gave the ACCESS test. And then in March, the same month, was when all the school closures happened nationwide. June, we received individual student test scores, but then in November, the state gives us the ELP data. And so that is released publicly in November. So I'm gonna show you a little bit of what kind of growth we've shown through the year. So if you'll look at this, and this is just, it's very standard, if you'll look at it, how many students we went from one year to the next, FY20. And then percent that moved one or more grade bands or performance bands went 24% to 69%. That's huge, that's a 45% growth, just in one year. School progress toward proficiency went from 28.5% to 95.6%, absolutely huge growth for them, 67.1%. When they show this kind of growth, this is automatically going to show in our other standardized testing, in their classes, everywhere. It also gives them a lot more confidence to participate in class. These are some things that we did to achieve this growth. We provided some more, just a more rigorous approach. The model for EL sometimes is where they pull students out and work with them individually. We started pushing them into their regular classrooms. That means the EL teacher would go into the regular classroom and they would help teach them in that setting instead of pulling them out. We also implemented growing reader strategies, which I know the board has heard a lot about the elementary schools implementing, and we definitely pushed it with our EL students as well. Growing and learning was important for our students and teachers. Together, they worked tirelessly to make these things happen. And a big part of it is our parent engagement with this group. Encouraging sustained parent partnerships to involve the way parents help their child at home. Because we all know that there's nothing that beats that. So I just want to, I'm very happy to be here and tell you about some other awesome things in our county, but I just want to say congrats to our HES teachers, our EL students, and the parents for making this tremendous growth.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan, and I do completely recognize, I know the other board members do too, you, because of the work you are doing, we will reap the results in your eight, 10 years, yes, thank you. Alright, Superintendent reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our financial update will be given by Ms. Smith, there she is.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I'm gonna take this off, so y'all might be able to understand me tonight, a little bit hoarse. Ms. Martha's got our general fund pulled up for us. This reflects our general fund revenue at the top section. And revenue collected through February 2021 is 73.85%. Expenditure for 54.60%. Y'all have to excuse me, I'll cough a little bit, I do not have Corona, I just have sinus. We have, sorry, glasses, keep help. We have currently started our audit. Y'all may remember, for the new board members, I'm gonna give a little information about this. The Georgia Department of Audits and Accounts comes and visits us once a year. The audit they will be performing is on the FY20 financials for the school system. Last year, we did all of it, other than about a three-hour stint offsite. So everything we did was virtual, we had to scan thousands of pages to them. For the most part, we will do that again. They've said they might be able to come onsite for a day or two. We'll kind of have to wait and see what they ask us to do. They go into, we send financial information to the state. It also goes to the Department of Audits. Their Georgia Department of Education and Georgia Department of Audits are two different entities. So we send information to the DOE, they share it with the DOAA. But we also have to send additional information and reports to DOAA's liking. So all this, we have already completed, all this was due back in December of 20. So they have begun their review of that. We started Monday. It will probably take quite a few weeks to go through this, it is quite a bit slower. Typically, it took one to three weeks when they're onsite. With them offsite, it took, last year, it took over three months for them to conduct the audit. We typically have a three-member team. Right now, we only have one auditor working on it with us right now. So we'll keep you abreast of what's going on with that. There will be a final report when they're done. All the board members will get a copy. We also, just for your information, had for FY20, had to, we were required to do a SPOSS audit. It has to be done by an independent auditor. So we had company Malden and Jenkins, CPAs, do that audit. It was completed and satisfactory. They don't go into a lot of verbiage about it, either we met the qualifications or we didn't. So we did, we did that under Dr. Townsend. So they will also want to look at that audit that the other auditors did. So there's quite a bit to it. While we'll be involved in that most of the time over the next few weeks, there are two of us that typically work on that audit. So bear with us as we go through all our normal stuff, but we will give you updates on the audit and how the progress is going. Like I said, I do suspect it'll take quite a bit of time like it did last year. It's still new to us, because we are changing a lot of the ways we're handling things. They changed the process from last year to this year, so sharing of documents is safe and secure. Do y'all have any questions about the general fund or the audit? Okay, and I'm gonna move on, let Martha flip over to the SPOSS document. Our SPOSS revenue for February 2021 was $519,306.55. The interest earned for the month was $2,275.50. Expenditures totaled $61,528.50. And the month-end SPOSS balance was $7,847,363.99. We don't have a lot going on right now, you know, contracts are just beginning on the next projects that are coming up. Our 12-month average has increased to $537,313.93. I think we have a lot of folks still buying local, so we're very pleased with that. Do y'all have any questions about SPOSS? And that's all I had to say.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Operations and construction, Mr. Gillen.
Well, this is very exciting this time of year, because the weather gets better, they can get outside, they can do some things they haven't been able to do. We are working hard on, actually, an item that came to our attention today. We thought we had a problem, but we're working on playgrounds, putting new mulch out, preparing them, getting them ready for kids to be able to go out and use them again, because of the weather's so pretty. It's a major ordeal getting our campuses ready in the spring, but we have some beautiful campuses and we have a lot of people visiting our campuses this time of year. Especially at the high school, when we have all our athletic events and all. So we have nothing to be ashamed of, they're in good shape and everybody should be proud that they can come to our place to play. Transportation, we have training classes starting up March the 22nd. We hope to have some more candidates for that, please, if you want to drive a bus, sign up. We have two people from our recent class that are finishing up their drive time and they'll have to take one final test from the state. And then maybe we'll have two drivers there, which will be a great benefit to us. Spring bus evacuation drills begin in the next couple of weeks and we'll be getting with the schools and practicing those evacuations that we have to do every year. Kudos to school nutrition. All schools had a great inspection report. All but one had 100, and the one that didn't get to 100 had 99. So we got good, clean cafeterias, we feed our kids good, healthy food, and we need their support to keep coming in. Food's free now, they need to come and get it, because the federal government's paying for it. This is National School Breakfast-Lunch Week, still going on. So if you want to get by to one of the schools and have breakfast tomorrow, it'd be great. They'd enjoy having you there. It's also National Nutrition Month for the entire country. I wanted to give you an update on where we stand with our ag facilities that we've been in the process of planning for a few months now. We met last week with a group, the architect, engineers, construction people, Mr. Young, all the CTA people that are involved in ag, all the teachers in ag department, from the junior high to the high school. So we had a good group of people. We had had a meeting earlier, probably two months ago, to start the program of deciding what we need, how we need the buildings laid out, and start getting a plan together on how big it had to be, where it has to be, and the best use of our money for this. Great meeting, the first meeting was excellent, because in this meeting, we really didn't have to change the floor plans, anything, all that worked out well. We had a lot of good feedback from our staff to get this to that point. So we were real tickled with that. The only thing we're gonna have to do is a little bit more site work on how we're gonna make things work. And that's just some engineering to look at. You need a lot of room for these trailers, there's some 35, 45-foot long that need a lot of room to be able to turn and park and all that. So we're looking into increasing some of that area and making it work better. Actually, at the end of the day, I said, "Give me your wants now. We've got your needs, on paper, give me your wants." And every one of the ag guys looked at us and said, "Looks like you've got it, we like it." Now, we'll bring them back some detailed stuff to show them more of where water spigots are gonna be, where electrical drops are gonna be, and that kind of stuff, because that's really important to them, especially in the shows, when you bring in a big group of other people from other counties. So I think we're on the right track. We're very, very hopeful. The only caveat we see right now is getting steel. And we're in the process of getting it ordered. And we'll bring you a contract as soon as we can. But we need to get this steel ordered for the first building to junior high, because if we want to be in it this fall, we gotta get it going. if we want to be in it this fall, we've got to get it going. But we're working on finalizing the plan. We'll have a meeting soon on finalizing the plan, then we'll go out for bid, and we'll be carrying right along. Any questions? We won't be able to give the public a layout yet because we're still tweaking, and it's just, it's just a floor plan right now.
I was looking at, Stacy, at the junior high. I seem to remember somewhere in there that there would be a greenhouse. Is that not on the?
That's, that's not on that project part right there. I'm hoping I can do that in-house because we have one, and I want a contract with the greenhouse company to move it and relocate. We'll have, the only thing I'll have to do is get with the contract to do the water and the power and slab, then we can do the rest of it. The greenhouse, the one I'm wanting to move actually was recovered three years ago from the hailstorm hit, and insurance completely re-get it, so it's just a matter of moving it and putting new equipment in it.
I just want to make some savings there, I guess.
Yeah, that's a good savings, actually. Probably half at least.
So you want to have the facility at the junior high ready by fall?
I hope so. We're going to try our best. If we get the steel, it'll be ready.
Great.
I was just going to say, you said you're going to break ground tomorrow?
Yeah, she told me to. We'll go get it.
I will say, we have been talking a lot about it the last few months, but this has really kind of been talked about for a few years, yes.
It's time, it's time to get the junior high ag facility back on their campus. It's time. It really is time.
I'm glad to see these plans are, yeah. Thank you.
Stacy, I had a neighbor had, was putting their child on bus, and somebody, of course, ran the arm, and I don't know why people are so foolish and reckless that they would do that, but where exactly do our cameras cover all that?
We don't have stop-arm cameras. That's a whole different thing. I think right before I came to work here, they were investigating doing that and putting them on there. It's a little expense, but it's really nothing compared to the safety of a child. But a stop-arm camera has to be, there's some legal issues there because the sheriff has to be involved, the courts have to be involved, because it actually would go to the sheriff, and he'd recommend to the court, and the court would send the fine out. We can put them and just catch the tag and that kind of stuff, but you're not accomplishing anything because it has to be tied into a whole program. So, I mean, I can investigate that if you wanted to and do that to the buses. We do have that every now and then. We actually do keep records and reports on that. Our drivers are supposed to return that in to us when it happens. It's been better this year, actually. I've been surprised because it's usually 10 or 15 a year that we have, that we actually catch and can get their tag numbers and stuff like that. It is dangerous. It really is. People do it.
What would, what would a, the camera, would that increase that percentage?
Uh, what it is, is you share the fine, and it helps pay for the cameras, because the courts would get part of it, the school system would get part of it, and it's a program. I need to get you a little more information you can read. I think it would be better. I'm talking off of what I saw when I first come here and read up about what Rick and them had been looking at, but never did go through with it. There's some schools that have it. Most schools our size don't have it because it's not financially feasible. It costs money every year, and you never make it back. The big systems make money on it. I know that. I know, like a Gwinnett, a Fulton, or a Cherokee, they make money off of them from court lines.
I'd like to hear more about it.
Yeah, let me, let me get you some information. There's several, there's two or three groups got it, and I'll get them to send me some information, and I'll get it to y'all. I'll just get an email. We'll get Martha's email to you, and I can read up on it. It is interesting, and it may be that. That's up to y'all, but I'll get you the information.
Okay. Thank you so much.
That concludes our reports, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports Ms. Smith presented?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Green, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. 5-0, the motion passes unanimously. All right, we have personnel reports. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel Action Report Number One as presented?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Gartrill. Second is Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, vote is 5-0, passes unanimously. Personnel Action Report Number One is approved as presented. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel Action Report Number Two as presented?
I'll give a motion.
All right, Mr. Holland.
I'll say it.
Okay. Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote is 5-0, passes unanimously. Personnel Action Report Number Two is approved as presented. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel Action Report Number Three as presented?
I'll give a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four. Personnel Action Report Number Three is approved as presented. All right, the next item is approval of the FY '21 Budget Amendment.
Smith. Information for the Budget Amendment was sent to, out to the board members earlier this week. Do we have any questions regarding the Budget Amendment? And Ms. Martha has it pulled up. It's in bold etalics are the areas where there were changes. One thing I might need to explain, we are creating a Fund 150. What 150 is, it's called consolidation of funds. We have the permission right from the Department of Education to take pieces of our federal grants and some of our general fund and combine it together in an effort to create a lot more flexibility at the school level. This is the first year that we have asked to do this. We talked about it during the budget workshops back in the fall, but it's been a process. I think if you talk to the principals, they are enjoying the flexibility of that out at the school level. What it does, if we don't quite have enough money in federal funds, we can combine a little bit of general fund money with it, and it allows them to be able to do something like one school was able to bring a remediation teacher in. And we did this actually back in the fall. We are just following up with the paperwork. This is our first time in this little rodeo, so in the beginning, we were not going to have to actually put it on like this. We were going to manually keep up with it. During the course of the year, they have asked us now to actually make it formal, so it winds up on our DE 46, which is our financial statement at the end of the year. This fund actually will zero out, so you're going to see some funky-looking entries. There will be a transfer of revenue in expenditures, and then a negative expenditure out to those federal funds, so that area zeros at year end. It blends with general, part of it blends with general fund, the federal blends back with the federal grants at the end, but we have to do this. This is just one of the requirements they have told us, actually about a month, month and a half ago, that we would have to do, and it took quite a bit of time to actually pull everything apart to their satisfaction. But the other portion is we are amending from instruction to general admin to cover the expense in general admin that was associated with the buyout of the superintendent. So does anybody have any questions about that?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. I appreciate that. Do I have a motion to approve the FY '21 Budget Amendment as presented?
I'll give a motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holland. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, but also, I apologize. Ms. Smith, can I call you back up? Can you give a little more explanation of the Budget Amendment for just for public knowledge, if you don't care, please?
Okay. Where it came from?
Okay, so let's put your second down, and then we'll have further discussion. Would that be okay?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Would you like just to know what came from instruction?
I guess just give some more breakdown, like you had an email for us, the numbers, specific numbers, and where it's going. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I apologize, I should have asked you.
That's okay. I believe what Mr. Green is requesting, the unspent Pearson online funds, we had about $175,060 in unspent funds for that program. We budgeted $477,000. The remainder, we need to move the money because buyout was for future years. So we needed to cover about $350,000. So we took $175,000 of the unspent Pearson money, and then $175,000 in instruction. Of course, it's our largest category. We budget state health insurance money, and that's the side we have to pay, we're required to pay. We have to budget as though during open enrollment, some more of our employees might choose to go with that plan. They did not. There was actually over $200,000 left there, so we have taken $175,000 out of that category. So this is not taking salary away from anybody. It is not taking instructional funds from any of the schools, or M&amp;O, or transportation, or any of the other departments. It is unspent because employees, by their own choice, decided not to take state help with us. So that's where the other parts of the two together, so I moved it from instruct, or I'm requesting to move it from instruction to general administration where the superintendent is paid for. And that's just to cover basically the expense that y'all are aware of that was written.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion? Anybody else have any other questions? Anything else? All right. All in favor? Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All right. The vote is 5-0. Each year, school boards are asked to select a local board member to represent the entire board as a voting delegate at the Summer GSBA, Georgia School Board Association Conference and Delegate Assembly in Savannah, Georgia. An additional board member will also be chosen to serve as an alternate voting delegate. This information must be submitted electronically by April 15, 2021. Do I have a nomination of a board member to serve as the voting delegate at the 2021 GSBA Delegate Assembly?
Madam Chair, before the nominations, I'd like to point out to the board members that there is also a virtual option. So if you're, if you're uncomfortable with traveling and being in big groups, or you just don't feel like making that trip down to Savannah, you can attend as a delegate virtually, if that, if that affects anybody's desire to do that.
Okay, that might, that might change some minds there. Mr. Green has something to say.
I'm always happy to serve in any way I can, but I have served as a delegate before, and I think it's something that everyone should experience. So I would, I would gladly nominate any of you to serve that.
I think we need someone with experience.
I used to have to go to Savannah weekly for about five years. I haven't lost anything there.
I, if y'all want me to, I'll do it.
Thoughts, gentlemen?
I want to do it, but I will do it. I don't care. I do. The only thing will be my schedule, but if there's a virtual option, I can, I can work it out.
Okay. That's good. All right, well, I will nominate Mr. Tucker Green to be our GSBA voting delegate at the conference in Savannah, Georgia, either physically or electronically, whatever his choice is. Are there any other nominations? Do I have a motion for, do I have a second for them?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll upshy.
All right. The vote is 4-0 and one abstention. Mr. Green, thank you for your willingness to serve. Do I have a nomination of a board member to serve as the alternate voting delegate at the 2021 GSBA Delegate Assembly? Either physically or electronically.
I'll nominate Aaron Holland to serve as the alternate.
Are you willing to serve, Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. Holland has been nominated by Tucker, Tucker Green.
I'll second.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Okay. The nomination by Tucker, second by Tommy. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Mr. Smith? Sounds like he's on the road. Can you hear me, Mr. Smith?
I can hear you.
Okay. We have a nomination here for Aaron Holland to be the alternate delegate for the GSBA What is your vote?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The vote is 5-0. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, on action item E, we are asking for approval of the sex ed and sex assault and abuse curriculum. We are required by Georgia Code to establish a committee, which we have done, and the board is to regularly approve the decisions of that committee for a sex ed curriculum. And so the committee recommends that grades K through 5 continue to use Child Help Speak Up as the curriculum to satisfy the state requirements, and at grades 6 through 8, continue to use the updated choosing the best curriculum. At this time, the Pickens High School Committee wishes to meet again as they continue to look at curriculums before they make a recommendation for that school. But at this time, we're asking for approval from the board for that curriculum K-8.
Do I have a motion to approve the sex ed and sexual assault and abuse curriculum for kindergarten through eighth grade?
Can I give the motion?
All right. Mr. Holland has made that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
All right, Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The vote is 5-0. All right. interim Superintendent Young recommends approval of the minutes from the following board meetings. February 11, 2021, called board meeting at 5:00 p.m. February 11, 2021, regular board meeting. February 11th, 2021, regular board meeting, 6:00 PM. February 23rd, 2021, called board meeting, 4:00 PM. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from those three meetings?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Green. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Holland, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the vote carries 5-0. Interim Superintendent Tony Young recommends approval of this agenda item. Pickens Junior High School requests to surplus the attached equipment.
What do we surplus?
Damaged Chromebooks and technology equipment. Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve that surplus as presented.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All right, 4-0. Thank you very much. Mr. Young?
I think we have lost Mr. Smith.
We have.
We need to give Mr. Shea a moment to maybe reconnect, hopefully.
Sorry about that, I lost you.
That's okay. Nice to have you back.
I voted aye.
Okay, well then, and that was on the, to approve the surplus? And that, your aye was to approve the surplus?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then we have a 5-0 vote on that. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am asking the board to authorize me to sign a contract with Red Cross to conduct our CPR training for the district. Five or six of our school nurses are due for CPR renewal and Coach Rasko would like to certify third level sports medicine students in CPR as well, and this will take care of both of those things and it's for minimal cost. The bill right now is a little over $1,400, but the school nurses will be paid for out of PEO funds from the building, so actual cost to us at the district level will be well below $1,000. But I need the board to authorize me to sign that contract.
Okay.
I make a motion that we authorize Mr. Young to sign that contract.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gartrill. A second from Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Mr. Smith? Okay. The vote is 5-0. All right, the next item on our agenda is the approval of consideration of removing the interim designation from the title of our current superintendent. Do I have a motion to approve removing the interim designation from the title of the current superintendent?
I give the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holland. Do I hear a second?
I'll say I give the motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I want, I want to first say that I don't think there's any more important task that we have to consider than the appointment of a superintendent. And while this isn't necessarily the traditional route, I guess, suppose it's a decision like all I've considered very much and think heavily on and pray on to consider and I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to have a part in this discussion and deliberation and, you know, we've, we've had a rough couple of months and things that I very much was disappointed in and disagreed with and I've been very vocal about that and that remains the same. I don't agree with removing Dr. Townsend and being in this situation, but I'm also a realist and I realize we are in this situation. One of the things I've talked about last few weeks or a month ago is that we, we needed to focus on our students and the students we serve and our system and what's best and moving our feet forward and I think what's a, a big part of that is to recognize where we're in and we can't dwell in the past. We got to move forward, we got kids to educate and we got a system to run and that's why this decision was very, very, even more important, I think. And I had an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Young earlier this week and we had a very lengthy and candid discussion and I appreciate him sitting down with me and having that candid discussion. I can say that I felt like we agreed on a lot of areas and I think he agrees with me that areas we need to work on and improve and that we need to focus not on politics and personality, but on our kids and our district and move forward. And that's an area he and I agree. And so anyway, I, I will be voting favorably for this. I think at this moment in time, that's what's best for the district and what's best for our students and I appreciate his willingness to serve and I look forward to working with him and I've always said and I've always tried to work with anybody who will work for our kids and work what's best for them and I will definitely do that with you. So I think, you know, this is what's best and I think it's also financially probably the wisest decision right now in the situation we're in too for, for the district. So that's my thoughts and all the favorable, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, Mr. Green, thank you so much and I appreciate your thoughts and your willingness to work. I know we all want what's best for the kids, for the students and I appreciate that so much. Is there any other further discussion? Would anybody else like to say anything?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say that I think this would be a great opportunity to heal some wounds, bring our community back together under, under very strong, capable leadership. I think I'll do a good job with it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Well, I too agree. I think Mr. Young will do a tremendous job. He has done a tremendous job and I look forward to working with him in the future. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had our discussion. All in favor of removing the interim designation from the title of our current superintendent? All right, 5-0 vote. Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board.
All right. The next item is School Board Appreciation Week. Ms. Schoep, thank you very much.
Next week, school districts around Georgia will officially celebrate the service commitment of school board members around this day. Governor Brian Kemp has proclaimed the week of March 15th through the 19th as School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia. This evening, on behalf of our students and staff, we would like to say thank you to each of our board members. At this time, we would like to present you with a certificate of appreciation, goodies from I Think Financial, a gift from GSBA, as well as a token of appreciation from the district. So thank you very much for your service. We definitely appreciate the work that each of you do and your contributions to our system and to our community. So thank you very much.
While Destiny's handing those out, let me just add that in the, in the month and a half or it feels like a year and a half, but in the month and a half that I've, I've had the privilege of working with, with this group, it has truly been an honor that your willingness to serve and your willingness to work with me and I want to thank you for that. And I fully expect and look forward to the good things that are going to happen in the Pickens County School District. I'm excited for what lays ahead for us.
Oh, Steve, yours is in the mail, Mr.?
Oh, Steve, yours is in the mail.
I'll keep the keys to your Corvette real, real safe. All right, thank you so much, Ms. Schoep.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, do we have any further board comments? Anything any of you all would like to say?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that it seemed like my first few board meetings had been challenging. It was really nice to have one that I could get to see so many students who had excelled and honor them and see so many good things that we're doing. The house goes in harmony at all of our schools. This is what makes it worth it.
I agree, I agree. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holland. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The motion carries 5-0. We are adjourned at 7:23 PM.